Order at 5:31 PM Tuesday, June 19th, 2018 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Slusner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here. Let's stand as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, item 7.08, resolution, non-renewing probationary teacher has been added to the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. 3.01, above and beyond. Mr. Munoz.
On the screen is a list of the May above and beyond individuals, and I'm going to, each month, I'm going to read you a couple examples of those that were submitted. The first one was Luba Farrell from Riverside Elementary. Luba went above and beyond with assisting in the administration of the access test. She took on many extra responsibilities during this assessment window and made sure that students were prepared and ready for the test. She did an exceptional job and should be commended for her hard work and dedication. Next one is Bruce Frutiger, I think it is, from Century High School. This is Bruce, reached out to my fifth grade team, wondering if we could like to partner with him and his students for the tryout in the classroom program. Through this partnership, our students had so many unforgettable experiences. He put the students first in every decision he made, trying to make it memorable for his students and ours. As a result, his passion for nature and educating others, his students became mentors and educators for our students. These experiences wouldn't have been possible if it weren't for his hard work and dedication to Rochester Public School students. From the entire Riverside team and their students, thank you. And the last one is Elaine Backus from Century. Elaine definitely goes above and beyond to reach out to students. As a parent, I appreciate her concerned effort to work with a group of socially challenged boys. She worries about stress and has arranged yoga for the students. She also works closely with our EL population in the Culture Club. She just generally takes care of everyone. So those are our winners for the month of May.
And it looks like Melissa is here.
Yes. I forget that every month.
She never does.
As part of my role as Rochester Public School Foundation President, I get to pull a name out of the numbers in this little basket, and we draw one person every month, or every time they're recognized, to receive a $25 gift card to a local business, so.
Wasn't that...
Is that six or nine?
It's a nine.
Nine.
The dot's at the top.
It's a nine.
It's a nine.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Kimmy Washington.
So our winner is Kim Reed from Washington.
Thank you.
3.02, school board committee assignments update. Any school board members have any updates for the board and the others? Ms. Workman.
I don't have an update, but I'm going to embarrass one of my former, one of my colleagues on the board right now. I really want to let Deborah Seelinger know how many, much I appreciate the times that she's filled in for me on committee meetings that I haven't been able to attend because I was out of town or otherwise unable to be there. And, you know, I think that our committee assignments are really, really important, so I was very happy she was able to do that for me, so thank you.
Anybody else have an update or something nice to say about another board member? Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this, just the task force that we are organizing, their first meeting is coming up actually tomorrow, and we need a board member, and I suggest that we have a member from the long-range facility committee, and I guess I would also just suggest that maybe be Mark, since Mark is the only member of the three that's going to be here for a little while, so I'm asking the board that we assign Mark to that task force group.
Good thing it's already on my calendar.
Should I gavel him in?
Yes, let's do it.
Get it done. Is that how we vote on things now, I guess?
No.
We don't have to.
No.
Well, there are a couple of things I just wanted to comment on. One being, I'm excited that the district is able to allow opportunity for members of the community focus team to participate in the district's professional development. I think that's huge. What that can do and will do is actually allow members of that particular committee and the community at large to have a different view of many of the things that without participating one could potentially question and not really be certain of. And I'm just excited about this opportunity for them. I believe at least 12 have been identified, and if there are additional spaces, perhaps further combination can occur. And then, also, I participate on what is called the cradle to career. And this past week, just information for the board, this past week, the data group presented information on graduation rates, and not that it's greatly different than ours because they pulled directly from the MDE website, but it is interesting to note that there's this additional layer and level of collaboration which is occurring. That brings together the community, and who will, and of course, we are a part of that community. I do know that Amy was there, as well as Kathy Nathan, who is the PTSA, PTA representative, and it's just an exciting thing. I would encourage board members when available to participate, to keep your ears open, to hear more about what Cradle to Career is doing, and the opportunities we will have as a board and district to engage with them.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
I'd like to ask Director Barlow a question. How would we find out the dates and times of those meetings? Do you have those?
Well, there's the website.
Okay.
And I would refer you to the website.
Great, thank you.
And you mentioned community focus team. The next meeting of the community focus team will be here on June 27th? Is that right?
Right.
Okay, and if people are interested, email me and I'll tell you for sure. But meet in this room about 5:30 to about 7:30, and I think that's the date, and Ms. Seelinger is checking it.
It is. Wait, sorry, the 27th.
June 27th, thank you. Anything else?
Yes. Never mind. We gotta wait till consent.
4.0, consent agenda. Any items to be pulled for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, before we move on, I want to acknowledge we have three retirements that were in the HR consent. Margine Demerol.
Demerol.
Demerol. Music teacher at Jefferson Elementary, 32 years. Janet Grawski, library secretary at Kellogg Middle School, 19 years. And Mary Kirk, transportation paraprofessional, five years in the district. So we want to thank those three individuals for their service to the district.
Thank you. 5.01, discipline data review. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
All right, we're gonna, Carl and I are going to present the discipline data, and then we do have a couple principals, and our, one police liaison officer has agreed to come tonight, so if there's any questions specifically that they can respond to, we will call them up. I think we're going to start off with Carl's going to go over the discipline data, and then I will take up after there and talk about the referrals to the police. I know there's been some concern that the format has changed. This is going to be a little bit different than we presented last time, because if you recall, when we were up at the school board conference, there was a discussion, the board had said they wanted us to talk more, have people come in and show the things that we're doing, and not spend so much time on the data. So we kind of went back to the way we presented it the first time, so I think you'll see a little, some similarities, but we did also add some additional subgroups. We added EL, special education, and those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to Carl.
Good afternoon, board members. We're not going to set a record tonight. I understand the record is 78 slides, and we had that in mind when we were developing this, but we're not quite there. But we do have a lot of slides to cover, so I'll jump right in. Some points to consider, the data we're sharing tonight is, these are office referrals. So these are things that teachers are referring to the office for administrative support upon. These are not classroom managed behavior, so these are Level 2s. This data is, this is preliminary data. We, this data is a week and a half old, so since the last day of school or the workday on the 8th, this is when we pulled the data. There'll probably be some cleaning up before we do our final submission to OCR and to the RPS website. I think last year, as I was presenting to you, we probably had a change of about 30 referrals that were added when all was said and done. So we'll, we'll be doing some, there'll be some fine tuning that'll be going on. The other thing is, we are, I mean, this, you might see something that doesn't add up to 100. There is rounding that goes in when you're using Excel and you're using and putting that into a presentation. Sometimes things don't round up to exactly 100, and anytime, we really tried, when we were doing this presentation, to eliminate those hand calculations and transferring data, because that's where those errors can occur. So we just wanted to let you know a couple of those things. Also, as we, as we jump in, overall, there was a reduction in referrals between 1617 and 1718 of just under 65 percent when we take referrals in total. There were less students who received referrals from 1617 to 1718. Last year, there were 2,807 students who received at least one referral. This year, where there were 1,562. And finally, a small number of students continue to account for the vast majority of referrals, and I think we talked about that last year as well. Couple more pieces of information here before we get into the data slides. For 1718, as we look at students who are identified as Native American, they were referred as a rate, at a rate more consistent with their enrollment. Last year, it was probably double their enrollment, their referral rate was. This year, it's very consistent with their enrollment rate. When we look at Hispanic and Black students, they continue to be referred disproportionately to their enrollment. We added free and reduced lunch status, English learner, and special education this year to the district-wide data, and all of these groups are referred disproportionately to their enrollment, and there's slides that will follow that will show that. And then we're also adding the district and building data on referrals to law enforcement. So this slide is a summary of the entire school year, 1718 compared to the entire school year 1617. I think when we were here in January or February, we showed you a comparison of halfway through the year, this year through halfway through the year last year. So this is the full year. This is a, this slide has a lot of information on it, so if you look at the top row, those are the number of incidents that were referred. Referrals, incidents, not, not the number of students, but the number of incidents. So that's right below the 1718. If you look on the bottom, below the dark blue line, that looks like to me at this angle, that's our 1617 referral data, so we are looking at 12,361 last year, 4,336 this year. Right before the, below the referral line, you're going to see the percentage of the referrals, and that's just the referral for the group divided by the total. Below that line, you're going to see the percentage of enrollment for that group, and that is taken one time a year in the fall. That does, so even though it might change as the year goes on, that is captured in, I think, the October/Mars report. And then finally, the last row on the top and the bottom is something that we used when we did the presentation mid-year was, that's, that's something that looks at referrals divided by enrollment, and it's something that when we look at that, if you, in the perfect world, you would have a 1.0 on all of those, because the student's referral rate would be the same as their enrollment. So if you see something less than one, that means that the students are being referred less than their enrollment rate, and if you see something more than one, that means that that group is being referred more than their enrollment. So when we look at the number of referrals, one thing we need to keep in mind is, I know we all talk about how our enrollment covers around 18,000. When you take all the students that enroll and unenroll and come and go during the year, it's actually closer to 19,641, to be exact. So when we, that's the number we take when we're looking at the students who are receiving referrals. So when we break it down and we take that spreadsheet that allows the, all the enrollments or all the referrals, and look at how many students accounted for that, 1,562 students accounted for those 4,336 referrals, and this is 8 percent of that student enrollment. And the number of students who received the referrals, so if you take that 1562 and break it down by race, that's where you'll get that next line of Native American 20, Asian 91, Hispanic 215, Black 574, White 662. This means that 92 percent of our students, excuse me, that were enrolled during 1718 had zero referrals. When you look at the students who had, the next bullet, the 196 students, what I do there is I take all the data and I put it in order from the highest number of referrals to the lowest number of referrals, and when you start dragging down through there, if you got, I tried to find the approximate 50 percent, and that's for students who had six or more referrals. And if you take the students who had six or more referrals, there's 196 students that had that, and that is 1 percent of the enrollment, but that accounts for 48.4 percent of all the referrals that were received. And if you take the 20 students with the most referrals, they totaled 462 or 10.7 percent of the 4,336 referrals. I think last year, the question came up, what is the mode, what is the most, most common number, and that's one referral. 888 students who had referrals had one referral. This is a slide that we added new this year. What we did is we, this is from a district view. We looked at the number of referrals total, so, and this is a slide that contains free and reduced special education and limited English proficiency. If you look at the top row under the 1718, that 4,336 is the total number of referrals. Of that 400, 336 referrals, 3209 of those were students who qualified for free and reduced lunch. Out of that 400, 4,336, 2799 of those students were in special education, and then 816 of those students were identified as limited English proficiency. The next line is the same thing. It's the total number of referrals divided, total number of referrals divided by that 4,336. So free and reduced lunch students accounted for 74 percent of the referrals, 64.6 percent of the referrals were students who were in special education, and then 18.8 percent of the students were identified as limited English proficiency. Below that is the enrollment of those students this year, those, those student groups. And then we did the same thing. We took the referrals divided by enrollment. So free and reduced students, they would have been referred pretty much twice at a level of their enrollment. Students who are in special education, 3.89 times their enrollment, and 1.76 for limited English proficiency. If you look below the dark blue line there, then you'll see that, what that breakdown was last year.
And it is, it is possible that a student could fit in all three of those categories, so keep that in mind as well.
If we took, if we take a look at total referrals by level and break that down, elementary and middle are fairly close to each other. 2,178 of those referrals come from elementary, middle, 1767. The high school has the lowest level, and if you can, as you can see by the percentage over the past two years, that pattern has been pretty consistent the last When we look at 1718 and 1617, the most common referral reasons are the most common, and they're entered as offenses. This year, physical aggression was the highest, followed by interruption to learning environment, finally, fighting. And then 1617, it was physical aggression, insubordination, and classroom disruption. We also had this slide last year where we provided information about suspensions and administrative removals. So you can see a comparison from 1718 to 1617 by race. So there were 976 incidents that resulted in a student being removed, either suspended or administrative removal, and then last year, there were 1,341. The next series of slides has the breakdown by building. So I'll just start with, we'll use Bamber Valley as the example here. Similar to some of the previous slides, same pattern. 1718 are going to be your number of referral incidents or number of referrals. That's not the number of students. So for Bamber Valley, there were 113 referrals during the 1718 school year. Then, same thing, percentage, and then percentage of the enrollment, and then the bottom is 1617, the same breakdown. And then what we did at the bottom for some of these slides or most of these slides is just to give you an idea of how many students are accounting for those referrals, the average number of referrals for students who received referrals, and then how many, if there were students who had a high number of referrals, 10, 10 or more referrals. So for Bamber Valley, you had 51 students who accounted for those 113 referrals. The average number of referrals for students who received referrals would have been 2.2, and then you had one student who had 10 or more referrals. As we look at Bishop, similar number of referrals between the two years. They went from 43 last year to 37 this year. They had 24 students who had those 37 referrals, so they were pretty spread out. 1.54 average for students who received referrals. Churchill, had 46 referrals this year. 17 students accounted for those. Average number of referrals per student who had referrals was 2.7. There were two students with 10 or more referrals at Churchill this school year. Elton Hills, there were 65 students that accounted for the 211 referrals. The average number of referrals for students who received referrals was 3.25, and then there were four students with 10 or more referrals. Falwell had 24 students who accounted for 78 referrals. Average number of referrals, 3.25. Two students with 10 or more referrals. Ben Franklin, 58 students that accounted for the 132 referrals. Average number of referrals, 2.28. One student with 10 or more referrals. Montessori at Franklin, there were two students. We didn't put any additional information. I mean, two referrals, sorry. We didn't put the extra bullets on the bottom there for two students. Gauge, Gauge had 551 referrals this year. There were 142 students that generated those referrals. The average number of referrals is 3.88. There were 17 students with 10 or more referrals from Gauge. Gibbs, 20 students who accounted for 45 referrals. Average number of referrals, 2.25. One student with 10 or more referrals. Hoover, 42 referrals that were generated by 13 students. Average number of referrals, 3.23. One student with 10 or more referrals. Jefferson, 73 referrals generated by 40 students. Average number of referrals, 1.83. One student with 10 or more referrals. I'll just pause a little bit on each slide. Lincoln K-8, 32 referrals that were generated by 24 students. So they're pretty spread out. I didn't put any additional numbers on that one. Same with Longfellow, 15 students, or 15 referrals that were generated by eight students. Pinewood had 213 referrals that were generated by 52 students. Average number of referrals, 4.1. There were seven students with 10 or more referrals at Pinewood in 1718. Riverside, 325 referrals. 90 students accounted for those referrals. Average number of referrals per student, 3.61. Seven students with 10 or more referrals. Just remember to slow down here. Sunset Terrace, 228 referrals. Those are generated by 72 students. That means 3.16 average for students who received referrals. Four students with 10 or more referrals at Sunset. Washington, pretty much had identical number of referrals between the two years. There were 22 students who accounted for those four-year referrals, and there were no students who had 10 or more at Washington. Getting into the middle schools, Fidel had 29 referrals. There were 20 students who generated those referrals. Sorry, this didn't get on the slide. And they had zero students with 10 or more referrals. John Adams had 893 referrals. Average number of referrals per student, 4.27. 26 students had 10 or more referrals at John Adams. Kellogg, 242 referrals. 102 students generated those. That means there were 2.37 referrals for students who had referrals. One student at Kellogg with 10 or more referrals. Willow Creek, 586 referrals. 211 students accounted for those referrals. That means average number, 2.78. Eight students with 10 or more referrals. Finally, our high schools. Century, 76 students accounted for 91 referrals. Average number of referrals, 1.19. There were no students with 10 or more referrals at Century. John Marshall, 128 referrals that were generated by 100 students. Average number of referrals per student, 1.28. At the high schools, there were no students with 10 or more referrals. Finally, Mail, 147 referrals that were generated by 123 students. Average number of referrals, And then the last slide that I'm presenting, I think I took last year's slide and just added this year's data onto that, so you can see a four-year referral rate in a bar So the far right bar goes left to right. The far right bar is this year. So the far right bar goes left to right, the far right bars this year.
Do you want questions now or later?
Yeah, let me do this slide and then we'll take questions. This is, I wanted to share with you, and that's really small, I apologize, but this is exactly when you saw on my weekly update, I, you would see on there that we had data discipline meetings with building principals. This is exactly the document that they received, and this is the conversation we had. If you look at the top part, it's, it's exactly the same thing that was on those individual building slides. And then below it, we crossed out the names because we didn't want to identify, but on the far left column were the list of teachers. So we had their discipline data for two years by different subgroups, and then we had a list of teachers, their office referrals last year, teachers referrals this year. And we would have overall conversation about their building discipline data, and then we'd work our way down to the teachers. And if we saw a particular teacher who maybe appeared to look like she, she or he was referring more students of color at a higher rate than white students, we would have a conversation about that. And some of the things that we, we found out, for example, in one site it was, I think that a teacher had ten referrals, eight of those were students of color. So as we dug deeper and had conversation, we found out that eighty percent of this teacher's classroom were students of color. So very few white students in the class. Other conversations we had, we even dug deeper and opened up and said, all right, these eight Hispanic referrals, let's talk about those eight kids. We pull up their name and boom, the principals can say, yes, that's Johnny. Johnny, we, here's the interventions we put in place for him. This, these are things that we've been doing, these are, he's now been identified in special ed services, is now receiving services. So they could tell us, they knew exactly who these kids were. We don't typically share that at board meetings, we can't share that at board meetings. But I can tell you, when the sites are looking at their data, they're looking much deeper than what we are presenting to you. They're down to the individual student, and they know what students are struggling with behavior, and they're able to share with us the interventions and things that they are doing to, to work with these individual students. That's the meeting we have with them, but you're well aware that Afa Lobby meets with them monthly and goes over their monthly data and has very similar conversations. So just kind of wanted to share with you that we're going much deeper at the site when we look at the data than what we're actually sharing with you and the general public. So at this time, we'll take questions on the discipline data before we go on to the referrals to law enforcement.
Let me just start with this, I mean, it's a lot of information here, obviously. And we are keenly aware that the buildings really get all the information that they need. And, and so they look at the data, but they know the kids, and they know the interventions, they know the staff, they know, they know the stories. They know not just how many kids are being referred, but they know why. And, and I think they're doing a lot of work to, to do, to help the kids as much as they can, to help the staff as much as they can. For the community and for the board, however, it's, it's difficult to digest this much information, knowing, for instance, that the comparison of last school year and this school year is difficult because the standards have changed. For instance, I, I think one of the reasons for, one of the offenses was insubordination, which I don't think is in the behavior handbook anymore. Insubordination was one of those terms that's kind of mushy. So I think that the behavior handbook and the offenses and a number of other things have really been cleaned up for this school year. It makes the comparison of the two tricky. We have good baseline data this year going forward, but when we compare it with last year, it doesn't mean too much, I don't think. The community engagement committee has suggested that the board have a workshop study session to look at the data to determine what is going to be useful for us as we, as we move forward. What format, what kind of information? And I think that we need to decide that and decide it soon so that going forward, we can get that information in that format. Beyond that, I, I think that it's going to be good for this board and for our community, really, to get an education about what does all this mean and what is the district doing, to look at the programs we're using, to look at what happens when a student gets referred. Does he sit in a chair someplace, or is there something else meaningful that happens to that, to that student? There are a number of other issues, and I think that the more educated we are about that, the better. So I would really, we would like to suggest a study session so that we can dig into this deeper. Then, Ms. Workman, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So you compared all of twenty sixteen seventeen with all of twenty seventeen eighteen, is that correct?
Yes.
So was the entire school year.
Yes.
So if I, I know I remember correctly because I watched the video from February sixth. One of the, we'd had some fairly robust discussion on the things that Chair Marvin just mentioned. I, I guess I was a little bit disappointed in this presentation, perhaps we can have it later, not to, to, to see the difference between the first semester of this year and the second semester of this year. So I took it upon myself to figure out one school, and it's good, where Bamber Valley's full year, and I only picked Bamber Valley because it started with the first one on, on the chart. For twenty eighteen, they had a total of one hundred and thirteen referrals. So first semester, which we got in February, the total was seventy-seven. So the total for, for second semester was thirty-six. So we went from one hundred and thirteen, I'm sorry, we went from seventy-seven first semester to thirty-six the second semester. So I think just doing that one school shows a definite improvement using the same metrics for both semesters. So to me, that's more meaningful than, as you said, comparing those two years. It's nice to have this data, but I think once, since we're now set with this, these new definitions moving forward, it will certainly be a whole lot easier for you to compile because there are fewer things listed on, that are qualified as referrals, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to comment on that. I, I guess what the board's going to have to decide is what you need to govern. I can tell you, we at the district level look at it more frequently than just by semester. We're monitoring it rather frequently at cabinet meetings, so we're well aware of how, how the schools or how we're progressing district-wide. But, you know, I guess that's a conversation the board will have to have on what, what kind of information do they need to do their role as, as a governing board?
Ms. Becker?
So just kind of piggybacking on Julie, so do you find that there's more offenses in the first semester than in the second? I mean, I'm just wondering if, you know, I mean, just kids coming back and having to, you know, readjust back to school? I mean, just, I don't know, just curious.
I think with, with some kids, you're, you're going to see a spike in behavior whenever you have like a week, you know, these winter breaks or long breaks because they have to get back into the routine of raising their hand, you know, doing the school thing that you, we ask them to do every day. So I do think you, you see that. I don't recall offhand if what our first semester was last year compared to this semester, so I.
So it's not, so just from what I'm hearing, it's not necessarily something that, that jumped out to you guys as you were looking at your data all the time, that, well, oh geez, yeah, you know, right after summer break is, is really troublesome? Or maybe it's not, maybe it was just really scattered throughout the year.
There's some peaks and valleys. OCR asks us for the full year data, so that's what we generate when we're generating this.
So would it be more beneficial for, for you guys, and I know you're asking us how, you know, how, how we want the data, but, I mean, is it beneficial for you to look at it, first semester, second semester? Is it beneficial for you to look at it weekly, daily?
I can speak as a, as a former building principal, and I know our, our sites look at it more frequently than we do, especially their PBIS teams, and they're not only looking at level, level twos, they're looking at level ones as well. I know as a former principal, you monitor that closely, and there were certain times of the year that you knew behaviors are going to be, you know, if you have a really long, have a spring where there's a lot of rain and you can't get outside for recess, you know you're going to have more trouble with behaviors in the classroom because kids can't get outside. So I think those are things that individual buildings monitor and, and are aware of, and then try to make adjustments. For example, one, and even looking not only the number and comparing it to previous semesters or weeks, but looking at locations. One school shared with us that they discovered they were having a lot of issues in the hallway, going, going and going out to recess and coming back in for recess. So when they discovered that, they just changed the direction of a group of kids and took care of that. So it's just, that's the type of, of things that the schools are doing when they're looking at their data, much deeper than we are at, at the district level, but they are looking at it further frequently and then making adjustments based on what they see.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, I will say in advance, I have three, two to three questions. So first, I'm curious if there's a correlation between high student or school population capacity. As you know, we had a significant discussion regarding boundary changes due to population within our schools. So I'm wondering if there's correlation between a student population and student behavior? If, and we could perhaps identify those elementary schools where we propose boundary changes and now look at the data to see what their numbers may be. The purpose of my inquiry is to perhaps allow a, it's great to have data presented as information. It doesn't necessarily tell a story of what actually is going on and what we can do or what is being done to address it, or what we can do to avoid it. So I would be, I don't know if it's, we request that of the admin, but further as it may relate to that, it seems to me that it would be important to know the time of year, the time of day, the day of week, a month of year. Without knowing that information, and we're just kind of responding like a bag of Jiffy Pop, responding to occurrences as if they're disconnected to any other thing. Or as I think Superintendent, you just indicated that it was your observation that maybe due to climatic reasons or maybe a spike or an increase. The point being that if we're aware of these things, or if the district is aware of these things, there are some probably preemptive or preventative strategies, opportunities that may exist that may also include a community involvement and community engagement that I would be definitely interested in, in seeing occur. Further than, my next question would be, you had referenced interventions, I'm thinking necessary support. So those students which are maybe receiving ten or more referrals, as a member of the board, it would be useful, beneficial for me to know, to be assured that each of those students are getting the necessary supports, they need interventions to not only address the behavior, but to bring about the proper change and the desired academic success, I'm sure we want of all our students. So just a question as to whether or not beyond the intervention, if it's a restructuring or a placement in a different setting, if that type of information could be provided. I know, and I appreciate the fact that it seems like maybe the board is being shielded from what actually is occurring on a day-to-day basis. I realize for governance, but it's helpful to know the behind-the-scenes information, so.
Well, Donna, I can share with you, we'd, we'd be here for a couple hours, sharing the multiple things that are happening, anywhere from changing placement. For example, we had some setting three kids that we reevaluated and put them in a setting four, and that worked out better. To, we have one of the, a middle school principal in the audience who I know for a fact, she and district staff worked with the family to help the family even find jobs in Rochester. I mean, you name it, they do it to try to help not only what's happening in the classroom, but trying to help the family be successful because knowing if they're successful in our community, then their child's going to be successful in our school. So we can bring that, but it's going to be a smorgasb- I mean, it's going to be a lot of things, interventions and things that they're doing, from conversations with the individual to hooking them up with a mentor in the school, to helping their parents get jobs, to clothes, to food. I mean, it's just, it's really a variety of things that our schools are, are doing to try to help kids be successful.
And no reason to not doubt that it would take a great deal of time, but it's useful to know versus simply looking at data and student, students by race and or numbers. So that lets us know that things are being done. And then finally, on slide thirty-five, which was really the bar chart, and one of the previous directors already made the point, no useful purpose in my mind exists to reference years where there are different metrics being utilized to actually calibrate and identify the level offenses. And, and so I would much rather prefer to have a true apples-to-apple comparison occur versus comparing apples to oranges to pomegranates. And so I look forward to the study session. I don't know if that's simply a suggestion, a thought, or if we have to formalize that in the form of emotion, but whatever it would take, I think we as a board really need to. And I know the superintendent has some different occasions to include tonight. Appeal for us to tell or to advise him on what it is we actually want in the form of data.
Mr. Schlesner and Ms. Workman.
A couple of questions. So again, not to beat it to death, I guess, but it's good that we'll have a common set of data going forward. One of the questions I have is especially when looking at the middle schools, is are we certain that the, the middle schools or all of our schools are used in the same guidelines for referrals? It just seems one particular school is pretty disproportionate to the others. And I know that's one of the concerns in the past is we didn't have consistency across the district in what referral A meant to all of the different schools.
I would say, I'm not going to sit here and say a hundred percent guarantee, but I can say we're a lot closer now than we were in previous years. There's still, you know, I, I think our community has a little misunderstanding that we're not male clinic, and I'm not going to give a group of kids a pill and another group a fake pill, and then we can do real good research and make good comparisons. You have the human factor, that's the individual administrator or teacher that's dealing with that behavior. Can I guarantee that every fifteen hundred teachers that we have in our school is treating it exactly the same in every middle school? Probably not, but I know that they're striving to do that. I think the definitions, you know, we spent a lot of time with the assistant principals and principals on the handbook and going over the definitions, so we have a good understanding that this, if we're going to code it this, this is what it means. But there's still, there's always interpretation. And I don't think in education you can say, I guarantee that every specific behavior is exactly the same and treated exactly the same.
Certainly not, but I guess when I see one school with twenty-six students with ten or more referrals and the other middle schools at one or eight, I'm just left wondering if it's not more of the local building administration versus the lower level, the teacher level.
Or it could be the group of students that are in there too, that's, that's another factor that the student population in each building is not identical and comparable. So you always have that, that factor that can contribute to, that I can tell you, the monthly conver- that's why we have monthly conversations. Afa Lobby does and goes over their discipline data with them and has conversations about these. I know, if you recall, in the, in the handbook, we talk about, these are the three things that warrant suspension. If it's not one of those three, you have to call downtown and have a conversation. So that's, I believe, helped in the suspension part because the three are pretty. that's, I believe, helped in the suspension part, because the three are pretty clear-cut. If you do one of these three, it's pretty hard to misinterpret that. But the others, and we're able to control that here at the district office, because we were the ones that finally say, yes, you can suspend or no, you can't. So, you know, I, if we came back a year from now and we're presenting the eighteen, nineteen data, I couldn't, you know, we've saying this is our baseline data, but we, when we compare it to next year's data, I, you know, I think there's just too much opportunity for human interpretation in some areas that you can't guarantee that. But I think based on the changes we made in the handbook and the work that we're doing with administrators, I think we're gonna be pretty consistent.
Kind of like last notice on that, on consistency. So, you know, not that we can tell the future here, but next year's student handbook is essentially gonna be the same as this year. So that can, at least from the student point of view, the consistency will be year to year.
Yeah.
Right?
Mark, one of the things you asked about was the students and piggybacking on what Mike said, we did dig into some of the students that had a high number of referrals, and we looked at their history at their respective elementary school, and many of those students did have a history of many referrals that they're, within their previous two or three years of enrollment too. So it was, like my, like Superintendent Munoz said, there were some students with high referrals there over multiple years, through multiple buildings.
And I suspected as much, you know, when we track data, you know, if we know that on the individual student level, perhaps more targeted placement into environments that would work best for that student would be possible, if we're conscious with that data upfront versus after the fact.
Yep.
It's just me.
I know, but you know, the thing that I'm most concerned is the number of referrals related to physical aggression and fight. Some of the stuff, you know, I think probably kids being kids to some, some degree and choosing to, you know, act out, but you know, there's a difference between that and then those are actually engaging in physical activity or aggressive behavior, you know, and that. And I guess, you know, what are we doing to, you know, kind of segment that and monitor that? Because that's, you know, we gotta make sure every kid, you know, is safe, feels safe in school and, you know, they're not a threat to themselves or others. And we have a lot of institutional barriers, I think, that prevent us from sometimes dealing with those behaviors. And we probably should talk, when we have this, have this study session, we should talk about that. For instance, I'm understood the only person who can remove a student, you know, from school is law enforcement. Teachers can't if they feel threatened or whatever. They don't have the ability or the authority to do that. Is that, is that right?
What do you mean by remove from?
Well, remove, you know, actually removing them from.
Physically remove.
Removing them from the school, removing them from the school to get them away from, you know, all students. If there's a, you know, feel that for now, the student needs to be out of the building, we gotta go over here. I mean, I know we're, it's the aggressiveness and the physical aggression, I think that all of us should be most concerned about, regardless of who's perpetrating that or what have you, or the reasons for that. We have to deal with it. But I guess, what are we, what are we doing in, that we say, oh, just calm down, go back, go back in and get worked up again? I mean, what are we doing beyond?
Well, I think, I think the buildings, back to what I said earlier, they, they know the students that they're working with. Some they know, coming into the office and have a conversation, reflect, walk, talk through it, they can go back. And some aren't capable of doing that. You know, anytime a student is, is removed or sent home, the parent picks them up unless they're, you know, the high school kids that, and there are some situations where a student will not cooperate, and then, then you get into a higher discipline issue, and then you have to involve the police liaison officer to help, help with that matter. And then there's some, you know, they're, they're to build relationships and work with kids to really be prevented, but there are times when laws are broken and that's when they have to step in and, and remove students because of their behavior.
I guess, you know, this is not unique to Rochester, you know, in terms of, it's happening all over the country, you know, that. But I guess, that's something going forward. I'm just really curious as to what we're doing to manage or to, you know, provide assistance or to help. And if we gotta engage other segments of our community in this. For instance, I'll give you an example. We have a, let's say we have a report of somebody bringing a BB gun or something to school, and you know, those things get handled and what have you. We go in, we hear about it, you know, student A, blah, 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 A thirty-seven, whatever, student D, but every kid in that school knows who the kid is. It's one of the, it's just one of the things that, you know, that I'm wondering, are we gonna, as a community, we're gonna have to start dealing with this stuff, and we can't hide behind the, the laws and data. We gotta change, change policies and stuff in order, in order to actually get to these kids at a level where we can actually help them instead of using, you know, the laws to protect them, just don't allow us to effectively deal with some of this. I think that those policies sometimes get in the way. And I just gotta, I think we just have everything out on the table and discuss it. If we're gonna be different, and we can't, we have to own this. The community has to own all this stuff. And when I say the community has to own it, that's not just the teachers, it's not just the administration, it's not just the students, it's all of us. And we have to talk about it as a community, as neighborhoods, as neighbors. That's the way it used to be when we, some of us are getting up there going, I couldn't walk down the street if I looked wrong. By the time I got home, my parents knew, knew about it. Today, we don't, we don't, we just don't talk to each other like that anymore, I don't think, for whatever reason. But I think that, not so much the data having reported, it's what are we doing is what really matters in the end. What are we doing about this stuff? So to the extent that we can have discussion about that and then get to some sort of meaningful result over the long term, I think that's where personally I think we ought to strive to be going with how we use this stuff.
Well, and if I could just interject in this, Ms. Becker and Ms. Workman, I'll get to you. Yeah, what you just said, partly, I mean, this is a critically important issue. Equity is critically important. When we looked at the graduate profile, we decided that, you know, one of the main areas that we're gonna focus on going forward is access and equity. And we have, I think, we have to be better educated about what our schools are doing before, then we can decide what kind of data is going to help us to make the kinds of decisions we can make about what we need to do going forward. We can, we only have control over those things that happen within our schools. Clearly, we need the community, because we've got all kinds of issues that are pushing in from outside. But what this board needs to do is focus on what's happening in our buildings, what are our staff doing, what are the kids coming in with, what is our reaction, what kind of policies are we using, how do we measure that, and what do we need to focus on so we can do the best job possible for educating all of our kids. Bottom line is, we still have disparities, you know, in special ed, in racial disparities, EL, SES, we still have disparities. And until we close those gaps, we have to keep looking at numbers, but keep focused on what can we do in the buildings. And then exactly as you said, engage everybody we can and educate them about what our families, our kids, our staff needs. Ms. Workman.
Okay, I have, I have forty-seven questions. No kidding. I just really have two. I'd like to address what Mr. Smith said first, because I think he raises some interesting issues. First of all, we are constrained by federal education law and state education law as to what we can reveal about our students, their education, their history, all of that stuff. However, the student or the student's parents can go ahead and reveal any or all of that information. So it may be out there, but we are constrained by those laws, and I'm just happy that we're, you know, staying on the correct side of the law, because it is what it is. I don't think it necessarily serves students to be called out by the administration and saying, boy, we're gonna just get your name in the paper because you did X, Y, and Z. That's not helpful. So I remember about twenty-three years ago, my youngest son, who was almost five years old, managed to tip over the stroller that was, he was in at Apache Mall. I don't think they have them anymore. They're very heavy. And I told him not to stand up in it. He did about the fourth time. He did so. He fell over the stroller, hit him, and he broke his leg. So four hours later, when he was still crying, I decided we should go into the emergency room. And he had a broken leg and we had a cast put on it. So why am I saying this? My other two children didn't have broken legs. So I didn't say to them, oh, I didn't say to my youngest son, well, you know, your brothers don't have a problem with their legs, so that means you don't either. On the flip side of that, I didn't say to his brothers, oh, my gosh, your little brother just broke his leg and so you're gonna get a cast too. And this relates back to what the superintendent was saying, considering interventions and support with students who need certain kinds of things. That's what equity is. One of the points I was going to raise in the budget discussion after watching the video of it was, there was, at some point, it was, it was sort of like, we wanna make sure that we have the same kinds of things in every school, and we use the numbers in the school to make sure that things are equal. So if there are five hundred students in a school, they get X number of clerical workers that they have, you know, and so on. I'm just pulling that one out. But I think it's really clear that some buildings are going to need lots of extra support, and I'm not saying that we're not getting it. But this is information that's really important for the board to have, so that when we make budget decisions, we know how those funds need to be allocated. And like I said, you know, if you don't have a broken leg, you don't need a cast. If you do have a broken leg, you do, and we need to take care of you. So maybe, maybe a school has, you know, say, three hundred kids, and there have been a thousand office referrals in the course of a week, that school is going to need a whole lot of extra support than the school that has a thousand kids in it and has had no referrals. So I think in terms of, you know, you were asking, what information does the board need? I think on a thirty-thousand-foot level of view, what I would need would be just those kinds of things for you to come to us and say, you know, we need, we need more support at this school because of these reasons. I don't personally need a detailed report every week of how many students did what in, in all the categories, because you're the professionals, you make the decisions. But when we have that information, then we can translate into putting it into the budget to support those kinds of things that need to be supported. And I'm not saying you're not doing this, but I think, once again, it's helpful for us to know really where we need to allocate our resources, because they are limited.
Thank you. Ms. Becker.
I was just gonna, it seems a really long time ago now, but I'm gonna kind of piggy, piggyback on what Director Barlow was talking about. And I, I do think that the schools and the principals and the teachers do an awful lot for the kids. And I do think, even if it would take us two hours or three hours, that I think it would be important for the, for anyone who would wanna listen to the tape for two hours or three hours, to, to actually hear all of the really above and beyond things that our teachers and administrators do for the students that go to their schools. I'm, you know, continually amazed at how many things schools want or require to do, but also do just on their own for the, for the success of our students. And, you know, maybe it's a, maybe we take one, one time in our study session and really talk about, you know, because that is way above and beyond to help, you know, parents, parents get a job, you know, to help the student. I mean, I'm not saying it's obviously right, but, but certainly not the job of the administrator of the school to help a parent, you know, find a job. And I'm sure there's countless stories like that, and, you know, the staff needs to be commended for those, for those stories and for those things that they do.
It's just the schools.
I guess a question for, you know, one of the things I guess I'd like to see is, you know, like Gary brought up, is every time we've had this discipline, they ask about, well, what's the community got going on? And I'm still kinda waiting for an answer on that.
What was the question?
What, what's going on within our community to help the schools out? But as, as we have a work-study, special study, whatever you wanna call it, if it could be in a format where we could actually engage with the community-focused team, it's just not us talking to us, I think that'd be exceedingly helpful to have that dialogue with our community and the different organizations in our community. So instead of waiting for them to come to us, let's invite them to the meeting and have that dialogue there.
Mr. Barlow.
Well, last comment on this portion of the presentation. I was curious as to, and I appreciate the information presented on slide number six that dealt with the free and reduced special education and limited English proficiency. Were there certain conclusions we were supposed to draw? I know it was suggested that we didn't necessarily want to single out or stigmatize any portion of our student population, but I think most students know if they're free and reduced lunch, many students know if they're in special ed, and most students know if they're in English EL. And so I guess I would just advocate for consistency in our practices and in our statements, because for me, the goal is, okay, if these, not if, these issues do indeed exist, what specific strategies are we engaging in? For instance, to meet the needs of the free and reduced, and they're singled out, special ed and limited English proficiency versus simply identifying them as a group of students by number and by referral references. What are we doing specifically to help them and to address whatever issues they may be encountering?
And I think that may be part of our study session, because kids aren't, as you just said, basically, kids aren't numbers. You know, this is important information. We have to be data-driven, but they're not numbers. And so the question that I think we have to continue to ask is, what can we do?
Ms., Sealer. Sealer, I need that.
A clarifying question, Carl, about the buildings. Several. ALC in Phoenix not represented, and also a question about our early childhood, separate sites or connected sites?
ALC had zero referrals. I, sorry if I overlooked that. They've had zero referrals, I think, the last two years. We have not included Phoenix on these building lists as it's an all special education school at this time, but that would be something that's accessible.
And the early childhood, do we, do we track, do we, do we track early childhood discipline?
We do have pre-K included in, in the numbers, and I lump them in with elementary.
Okay, great.
Don't they just get sent a timeout? I suppose that's a referral.
So just adjusting the questions that are on the backs of our nameplates here. Who benefits from this information? Who is disadvantaged by this information or advantaged? What assumptions are we making about this information? Whose voices are we missing, if any? And I think, you know, those are certainly things to, to consider, but in the long run, it's, the bottom line is what outcomes do we expect for our students, or do we want for our students, and how are we going to get there? And I think we've got just such an excellent start on the things that we are already doing, from the professional development that we have coming in with Dr. Holly, to really clarifying what a referral is, what a referral isn't, to giving individual teachers the support they need in the classroom, to perhaps separate students, if, even from one classroom to another, if there's a problem, redirecting them in the hallway. And I think these are all really good things moving forward. And honestly, what I would like to see, somebody else sort of commented on it, is, I think it was Mrs. Becker, let's, can we emphasize too, all the good things that are happening in our classrooms? You know, we do to a certain extent, but I think if, if the community understood that it's, you know, we look at, we look at the challenges that we have, but we don't celebrate our successes enough. And this is not to say that I'm trying to whitewash what our challenges are, but to recognize that there are a lot of really good things happening with kids in our school, schools, including the ones who have more challenges, so.
Ms. Seelinger.
Superintendent, do you or perhaps Aflabi look at the overall district data compared to the individual schools or the schools amongst themselves?
It's not a comparison to other schools. It's when Aflabi meets them, they're just discussing their building data monthly. We look district-wide and building, but not compare Elementary A to Elementary B because, kind of back to what I said earlier, building populations are so much different than each other, so I don't, I don't think it would be right to compare. So, we look at how they did from the previous year, and I know there's debate at apples to oranges and all that stuff, but it's what we have. And down to the individual teacher, having what they've done this year, and then look if with the same teacher, was this portion of the previous year? We're having deeper conversation. In some cases, building administration is addressing something with that particular teacher, with classroom management. But we do not say, "Well, Building A is doing better than you. You need to straighten up here." It's really looking at individual buildings and their data.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. The next part is going to be referrals to law enforcement. And what, what I really want you, two things I want to clarify before we get started. These are when a student's behavior warrants referral to law enforcement. So, if you're making comparison to what the local police department may have, for example, if we have two parents fighting in the drop-off lane, police report's going to have that, and it happened on our property, but it's not going to be in this, this number because we're only talking when we, a student's behavior warrants a referral to the police department. We did not, we're not comparing to last year's for two, kind of back to the apples and oranges thing, but also, I'll be honest with you, we were not doing a very good job at the sites documenting when we referred to the police. So, we put a heavy emphasis on it this year. So, you're gonna, I'm not sharing last year's comparison because I don't think it would be a good comparison. There were 270 referrals to law enforcement this past school year. 225 students accounted for those 270 referrals. That's 1.1% of the enrollment, which, back to what Julie was saying, if you want to find a positive out of that, about 99% of our students didn't get referred to the police. So, that, that's positive. So, only 1.1% have. 13 referrals to police were done at the elementary level, and their top reason was interruption to the learning environment, physical aggression, and yes, unfortunately, some alcohol, drug, and tobacco possession. I would say the interruption to the learning would be to the point where the administration was not able to get the child calmed down. And in some cases, we try to bring the parent in to help us calm down, and sometimes that doesn't even work. So, then we have to involve law enforcement for that. At the secondary level, they had 257 of those 270 referrals to law enforcement. The top reason at the secondary level was alcohol, drugs, tobacco, and fighting and physical aggression. I would think that, and the fighting part would be a really, what I would call a real severe fight, one that there was a pretty good injury to the, an individual or individuals involved. So, I think that we would all agree that the things that they were referred for were good reasons to involve the law enforcement for those particular incidents. Here's how it broke down by race. Four from Native American, 13 Asian, 39 Hispanic, 108 Black, and 106 White made up the 270 referrals to law enforcement. And then the line below shows you the percentages of the 270. Just going to share with you, by site at the secondary level, this is John Adams. The top line tells you the number of referrals for the different racial groups. John Adams had a total of 29 referrals to police, and then the line going down, seven of them were for drugs and alcohol, 12 for fighting, nine for physical aggression, and one for property damage. Willow Creek had 39 total, one Asian, five Hispanic, 20 Black, and 13 White. And then the column down below shows you the different reasons they were referred to law enforcement. Here's Kellogg. They had one referral to law enforcement, and that student happened to be a white student. Fidel as well had one for possession of alcohol or drugs. Century High School had 30 referrals to law enforcement. One Native American, two Hispanic, 10 Black, and 17 White. And then seven for drug alcohol possession, 14 for fighting, one harassment, sexual orientation, physical aggression, five sexual assault, one, and sexual misconduct, two. John Marshall had 36 total. The top line shows you the breakdown by race, and then the column down below gives you all the different reasons that they were referred to law enforcement. Mayo High School had 88. Top line gives you their breakdown by race, and then down, right-hand column gives you the different reasons that they were referred to law enforcement. One of the things I do want to say, I don't want you to assume that all of these resulted in charges being filed. My understanding is, and we can have Officer Kelly come up and address this, but I, we refer to, to the police, then they'll make a determination if they're going to file charges, and then ultimately it goes to the county attorney to make decisions if there's actually going to be charges filed. So, I don't want you to think that those 200 and some were actually charged, but those were incidents that were, were referred to law enforcement over the year. Just kind of a little bit of a final summary of, we're going to continue working with Dr. Holly. As we shared with you, we readjusted our professional development, so every instructional staff would have training with Dr. Holly. It involved two different days of training, and then Envoy was for K-8 instructional staff. We've done some historical trauma training. And then next year, we've, you approved, or either approved or going to approve, I think you did approve, that was coming up, a contract with Dr. Holly for next year. And it's two types of training. It's the, two more trainings, and then time where he'll be training a small group of staff at each site where they'll go in and provide coaching on culturally responsive classrooms. Now, the middle schools have kind of taken upon their own this year. They used some of their site PD to contract additional days with Dr. Holly and his staff, and they came in and observed classrooms and then gave teachers feedback on culturally responsive classroom strategies that they were seeing in the classroom. So, that's a big portion of his work next year with our staff. Envoy training, we, we will have next year, one, two-day training for, to pick up any new teachers that we hire that haven't been trained. And then, really, that's the one that we're limited in space. We pay a certain amount and we have so many seats. So, if we have any additional seats open after we get new staff, we'll open it up, and if anybody wants to do a refresher course, they'll be allowed to take that. Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center, that, if you remember, that is our equity expert. That's part of the OCR agreement. We continue to work with them. One of the things that they will be working with us next year is taking our class tool, our teacher evaluation tool, and add a culturally responsive component to that teacher evaluation tool. So, that's something that we're really excited to work with them next year. As I mentioned earlier, Aflabi will continue to have monthly meetings with building administration, and, and then again, Carl and I and Jackie will go out and meet again with individual administrators to go over their data as well. And this is something we have ongoing discussion during leadership meetings and then also during administrative meetings as well. So, that's kind of it. We do have, like I said, a couple administrators and liaison officers, so if there's, excuse me, additional questions that you would like to ask them, we can invite them up to respond to those questions.
I think that'd be great. Thank you. Ms. Work.
I have one question that I think you can answer.
Come on up.
But come on up. So, who actually makes the referrals to law enforcement? Is it the teacher in the classroom, the building administrator?
No, it has to be administrator. A teacher cannot directly refer to law enforcement. It's, it's only through administration.
Okay. That's kind of what I figured.
Yeah.
Mr. Schlesner.
Just introduce, Officer Kelly is the liaison officer at Mayo High School. You know Nancy, former, now retired Willow Creek principal, and then Tom Olson, principal at Mayo High School.
So, Mike, as you reflect back on this last year, and you've mentioned what you have, what the district has going on next year, where do you feel needs more emphasis than what you thought was needed in the past?
Well, I, I, I think I'll answer part of that by saying, I think where we need to focus a lot next year is the culturally responsive strategies. And even though all staff have gone through two days of training, he has two more days that's part of that, and then any type you train and provide professional development, if there's not coaching to follow it, you lose, you lose that, that training that you receive. So, I, I think what we've designed for professional development next year is really the right direction to go. I think this year, we spend a lot of time, what I call, doing things that, you know, like the handbook. I think we're going to eventually start seeing some results because of the handbook, even though we saw our referrals drop. I think also just to the fact that the work that we've done so far has really brought this to the attention of all staff that are working with kids and, and really making us think differently when we interact with our students. So, I'm a firm believer, even though I know there's some individuals that want to see changes happen more quickly, it really, you know, there's research out that says that it takes about five years to really get, seeing outcomes based on changes that you make. So, even though we saw a drop in overall referrals, we still have some, some schools saw some improvement in disparities, but then we saw some increase in disparities. So, I just think it's, it's kind of a, it's a marathon. It's not a 100, 100-meter sprint. But I think we're headed in the right direction as far as what we get planned for next year as far as the PD.
And then, continuing your coaching, firmly for that as well. Who does that within a school? We have the sessions at the beginning, but if you like, the instructional coaches provide cultural awareness coaching as well, or?
Yeah, yeah, they do, because they've been, when we bring them in, then used to Dr. Holly does an additional session with, with administrators and instructional coaches on how to help implement that in your site. That's why I'm really excited about next year is that each building's going to have a little, what I call, experts in their building that can go out and kind of do what the middle schools did this year with Dr. Holly and his people. They can go out and provide daily observations and, and feedback because, you know, if, if it's not ongoing feedback, you're not going to get really good at it.
Officer Kelly, you know, the idea of a student being taken out by a police officer, I think is kind of a, it's, it's a tough thing to think about. Can you, can you describe what that looks like typically? You get called to a school, or you're already in the school. So, if something happens at Mayo, you're the one that deals with the student. Can you just sort of tell, tell us what that looks like?
First of all, it's the last thing we want to do. It, when it happens, and I can only speak for Mayo and Willow, that's where I work, so I'm familiar with that, the last thing we want to do is put hands on a student. A lot of times, the previous relationship I've had with the students is, it pays off in those scenarios. We call them frequent flyers when we're dealing with the same kids over and over. When they're going to lose it or feel like, you know, "I've had enough," and I'm, Mr. Olson, we just had a situation not too long ago where a man, he's a man, he's 18, he's a big, big student. He knows when he's going to lose it. And we've established this, if you're going to get angry, come and see us, one of us. Have a seat in my office. And I think those types of relationships have paid off for me personally when I'm dealing with that type of situation. The last thing I want to do is, is put them out of the school. We contact parents. Relationships with the parents are super important. And what I've realized from being on the streets to going to the school, that you're out in the, out in the streets, we don't necessarily have to contact parents. And the kids are, are, you know, they, they're more scared to talk to us, I guess. Scared is a bad word, but they're a little nervous, yeah. And so, when you get parents involved, and I, I'm talking to parents and the, and the kids in my office, things that you find out about kids and maybe why they're acting up like that. You have, you know, parents will tell me that they're tired, the kids are tired, that's why they're doing that, or you don't realize what's happening at home. And it's not that mom and dad don't care, it's that they're working, trying to make ends meet, and the student is raising a couple of kids and getting them on the bus to Willow Creek before they even get to school. So, there's a lot of feel-good stories about that. We could spend a lot of time with that. But as far as sending them out of school, that it, it's terrible. It's not anything we'd ever want to do. I don't know if I answered your question there, but.
Do you know, do you know, yeah, do you know about what percentage of the kids who are referred to the police actually get charged, district-wide?
I, I don't. It's, like Ms. Ramonio said, it's not, it's not 100%. I, I would bet it's maybe 60, 50. Each scenario's different, so it's kind of hard to, you're dealing with a lot of the same kids where, when you're writing them a ticket and you, you sit down with parents and say, "What is the best option here to get help for, for mom and dad?" And sometimes that's putting them in front of a judge. And when we go through that process and they end up in diversioned programs that we have where they're not seeing the judge, or there's community service that they end up doing, acts of kindness to their neighbors. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. And that's when the parents and, and we sit down and, you know, have some hard conversations about what else we can do, and that's where you get into the resources where, "I'd love to come to one of your," what do you call it, learning sessions?
Study sessions.
Yeah, study sessions. And mental health is one of the biggest things that, that we need help with all around the board.
Mr. Schlesner.
So, kind of follow-up on that is, as you have these situations and you end up talking to the family and kind of getting a fuller picture of the, the student's life, how much do you share that back with, say, the building administration so they can be educated on the student's life as well?
We talk about that all the time. Super important that we all understand what's happening at home.
Good.
Mr. Ral.
So, Officer Martin, I'm sorry, Kelly.
So Officer Martin, I'm sorry, Kelly. From your point of view, in terms of access and shared data, you're able to get information regarding students without any, do you need probable cause? I, I'm just trying to understand the nature of the relationship, how that occurs. Some students, we'll say the eighty-eight at Mayo, whether they also are part of the total of Level Two students that had, you know, exhibited behavior. What are you able to do in terms of intervention? Certainly I hear, and I believe other board members here read and are aware of what's called the school of the present pipeline. And what stops there may be to prevent that from occurring, and what things may be occurring to ensure that that may not happen, I don't know, and perhaps this is an opportunity to identify who has the responsibility to track the actual data in terms of students that are referred to law enforcement, and then the disposition of those referrals, whether they actually result in a stay at Many Rivers or a charge of, I noticed some of these instances, sexual orientation, harassment, weapons, explosive incendiary device at Mayo, for instance, probably are chargeable offenses. I don't know. I am far removed from law enforcement. But I guess I'm just trying to get a better understanding, a better feel, because I hear often from members of the community. I read social media on occasion and hear statements made, read horror stories, if you will, of what is happening in our schools. And so you as a liaison officer, it would be useful to me to share a potential real-time scenario where you provided intervention, where you perhaps even dealt with, and students of color, and their, those students and/or their parents, and how you were able to make a difference, and how perhaps those communities of color can feel better about the presence of police in schools, and how, you know, it's something to be valued.
Okay. You looking for an example of?
Whatever you feel you're able to share, I understand, you know, I don't want to, you know, ask you to divulge something that...
Um, yeah, there's a, a family, Willow Creek students and Mayo. The first time I met this family, they were very, very agitated in Willow Creek, like banging on the doors trying to get in, angry. I responded there, had, there's a lot of relatives involved and a lot of different kids in different homes. They're all family, they're all related. And mom and grandma were spitting venom at me, really, really angry, and at Nancy, if I recall. And we went for a little walk with the parents. I went for a walk, I think it was Grandma and Grandpa, and mom and dad, boyfriend. We went for a walk and talked about how we can handle this, because coming to the school and dealing with, you know, the problem at school, all of you there is just not going to work out. And it, I guess it, we kind of built a relationship right out there, that I'm at this school, so I can help you, you know, as what, they're super mad at Nancy, and sometimes we kind of play off of each other. When they're mad at Tom, or they're mad at me, we just kind of switch roles. That's super helpful. But this family, I get hugs in the hallways from them, and that's what, I take pride in that. That's the most satisfying part of my job, is building that. And we're going to need each other, that family and I are going to need each other. So we'll work together, and that's the biggest one that I can think of now, and that, yeah.
I just want to jump in on that, because when they came up and transitioned into Mayo, the first time that we had to call the parents, the first question the parents asked was, "Did you tell Officer Kelly?" Well, no, we can't get him involved because there's no crime. You have my permission to involve Officer Kelly because he really knows my kids. And the minute that we were able to say that he's going to be a resource to help us and bring him in just to deescalate the kids, it made our relationship with the parents and the ki, I mean, kids are stopping in every morning now to ask how my night went and just get, you know, a candy bar or something before they went to class, you know. So that really did help with some kids that have struggled in school and didn't trust administration, and that was because of the relationship that Pat had built with that family.
Well, and it speaks to the fact that, you know, Pat being at both Willow and at Mayo makes a huge difference, because the families that we're working with were sharing with Mayo, and we've built a good relationship, and we do have a great relationship with that family right now. But it's just been a lot of time and energy and understanding, and you can't treat all students the same way, with the same response. You have to look at every single student with a lens of who they are and what's, what they're coming to school with.
And just as a quick follow-up, if I could ask Tom, so how much discretion do you have, we'll say, for instance, alcohol, tobacco, drugs? The individual who may, it may be their first encounter with the man, the principal, staff, compared to another individual who may be, to use Officer Kelly's term, a frequent flyer, do you treat all students the same in that regard? Any student with alcohol, tobacco, drugs are going to be treated the same way equally?
Yes and no.
Okay.
I, I think as far as referrals to law enforcement, alcohol and drugs, weapons, the fights that Mr. Munoz alluded to, and theft, are pretty consistent that we're probably going to refer them. They might not always get charged, but at least they're getting referred. What we do after that really depends on that, I have four children and they're all completely different, how we meet their needs, coming back and move forward, and what is, you know, what's the reason that they're, they're drinking before school, or they've got the, you know, and you really try to get to the, to the bottom line of that problem, what's going on, something, and I think they left, but we had some of our best student leaders here from Mayo, and we've started, the student school board that we've had to go to has been amazing. And I think in this whole process, we've really lost the student's voice in what's going on with discipline. Mine just knocked my door down and said, "We're coming in." And once they realized our process that we go through, you know, we investigate if we believe a crime's been committed, we turn it over to Officer Kelly, and he does his own investigation. But once they realized that process, they were able to relate that back to their friends, and they understood what's going on at Mayo High School, and now we're meeting twice a month to talk about different issues that come up at student school board, things that are going on, and they've got my ear on everything. So they really, you know, this year we had issues with sexting in the year past. Our student government kids brought in Homestead County Health to address that, and we had no referrals this year. I've already got something from our vice president next year. She wants to bring in something about drugs and alcohol awareness. Well, if you look at our discipline data, and she hasn't even seen that, she just knows it, you know, that's our highest referral. Awesome, great. If that comes from the kids, that's a win, you know, and I think when you build that kind of trust amongst all, everybody in that school, I think that really does help get to the bottom line of what we want to do.
Yeah.
I wanted to touch something, I think you asked about, no, I lost it, decisions on charging. Parents have a lot of say in that. So, say you have a theft at Mayo in the locker room, we recover maybe some shoes or a cellphone. And I talked to both sets of parents. The parent of the victim says, you know, I think they learned a lesson? Yep, I believe that they did, you know, and they'll say, okay, we just want it done. So parents do dictate whether they get charged or not, a lot of times. And a lot of times, parents, when we, when you're able to sit them down in that scenario all together, or be on a conference call with them, nine times out of ten, they're like, thanks for being honest, and so that's another way around it. The tickets are getting... Go ahead.
So, so what I sort of hear you saying is that sometimes kids do really stupid things, and to charge them formally and haul them into court would be more counterproductive than to do what you are doing. And I really want to compliment all of you who are involved in this with the setting of relationships, because it is so important, and it, it's obvious that it's working. And I know it takes a whole lot of extra work and time and energy, and sometimes maybe tearing your hair out, but what it does for our students, what it does for our students is just absolutely what they need. So I really want to thank you all for your efforts, and this is, this has really helped me to understand the kinds of things that you do in school, and how you pull in parents, maybe even other members of the community, to, to help making things better for our students so that they can be successful.
Mr. Schlesner.
Looking at these numbers, are they all school hour numbers, or say it's also inclusive of after-school activities, like lots of drinking at my high school games, or something like that?
If it's a game or a dance or something like that, it's included.
Official school activity?
Yep.
So then these numbers would be, those numbers would be included?
We had one activity this year where there was sixteen referrals because of a violation of alcohol.
Other questions? Okay. Mr. Kelly, we're going to remember that you volunteered to come to the study sessions. Thank you very much.
I do want to make one final comment, and I think Gary, when you were talking about, and Tom kind of talked about it too, but it's not just about, here's the behavior, here's the consequences, and sometimes we, we have to give consequences, but, and sometimes that warrants a suspension, you're, you're out for a couple of days. But when they come back, they work with the child, because they want the child to be successful, and it could be to working with the parents, it could be, you know, this child has a chemical dependency, so we're going to have to figure out a way to help that get addressed, so there, it's not just behavior consequence. They, they're trying to help the child be successful, and, and they do a variety of things to address the issue that that child's dealing with that caused the behavior that they had to give a consequence for. So it's not just behavior, here in the book it says, "Behavior, this is what we do." There's a lot more to it than that, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Five point oh-two, approval to contract with the Center for Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning, 2019. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we couldn't let Janie go, her last official board meeting, without doing some type of presentation, so this is the, the contract that I alluded to earlier with Dr. Holly, so she's going to talk to us a little bit about that.
So, good evening, members of the board. As Superintendent Munoz kind of foreshadowed too, we have been working with Dr. Shiroki Holly and the Center for Culturally Responsive Teaching. At this point in time, all of our educational or instructional staff, so that includes our teachers, our certified staff, our paraprofessionals, early childhood through twelfth grade, have received at least two training sessions with him, and they have focused around environment, responsive language and learning environment. And so what we would like to do is continue that work with him. The agreement that we have presented, or is presented before you this evening includes Dr. Holly and his team coming back and providing learning opportunities in a variety of different ways. The first is for all of our staff continuing their work, so it would be, once again, all of our instructional staff, early childhood through twelfth grade, and it would be focusing one time on academic vocabulary and one time on literacy instruction with culturally responsive focus on that. The other thing, the other tier of, of training that it would include, as Superintendent Munoz talked about, is each of our buildings would have what they reference as a cohort. This is a group of teachers, and depending on the size of the building, it would range from five to ten teachers that would work more closely with Dr. Holly and his team. It would include a walkthrough of the classroom, input and feedback from Dr. Holly specifically. It would include ongoing professional development with the instructional coach in the building, and then additional visits from Dr. Holly's coaches. So there would be a total of three classroom visits by Dr. Holly and/or his team that would provide feedback onto the, feedback to the teachers regarding what they are seeing in terms of growth and in terms of the experience for the students. The other piece of this particular agreement would include training specifically for our leaders. How do our instructional leaders, how do our administrators, how do our district leaders provide and promote a culture or a respectful environment for all, that's inclusive of all learners? And then it would also include some additional training for our instructional coaches. How do they support the teachers in the classroom that do the additional work? So as you could see through the more detailed description of the work, it would be several visits from Dr. Holly and/or his team throughout the course of next year, and it would drill down into the classroom level by working directly with teachers in the classrooms, as well as in a whole group setting, as well as with the instructional coaches and the administrators around the district.
Yes, Mr. Schlesner.
Two questions. First one is, is substitutes.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do when substitutes come in and they weren't part of this training?
We are able to open up any of our training to substitute teachers, so when it comes to the training for the larger group, the whole group types of training, they are invited to participate in that. They are, they also are, have access to instructional coaches in the buildings, when they are in the buildings. But we don't have, you know, it's not a requirement that we have all of our substitute teachers go through this training before they can come into the buildings.
And then my second question might seem a little odd, but we know the value of Dr. Holly, but what have we done to share with our community the value of Dr. Holly?
We are in the process right now, actually Amy, Ike, Heather Nessler, and myself are in the process of creating a document that communicates to our community the work that our teachers have done around developing their capacity, and the work that we have done around the building a culturally responsive environment in all of our schools and all of our settings. So we had hoped to just quickly pull it together and whip it up, but once we started digging, wow, there's a lot. So we really want to frame it in a way that makes sense, and so we are in the process of working through that now.
And I would add that one of the times that Dr. Holly will be in our district, he's going to do an evening session for the community as well. Nope, he's not going to.
That's Dr. Troyer.
My fault. That's the other person on that. Sorry.
Sorry.
The other doctor.
Yeah. Yeah. When Dr. Holly is here, if, if this is approved, Dr. Holly will be here on August 24th, and our paraprofessional and our, our teachers and certified staff will spend half a day with Dr. Holly, and then they'll spend the other half of the day with Dr. Troyer. And then that evening, Dr. Troyer is going to host a parent event, so that any parents in the community can also come and learn from him on that evening. So we're in the process of putting together some informational communications about that. We did start priming the pump with, per se, at the powwow. We just had little cards to save the date, mark your calendar kind of thing, but we will continue that as the date gets closer.
August 24th.
August 24th. It's a Friday evening, but we, he said that, that oftentimes he does get a pretty good turnout on a Friday night, so it'll be probably the first of our massive community engagement evenings, or parent engagement nights.
Ms. Selinger.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Can you tell me about, in the MOU, the difference between the Cohort A and Cohort B?
Yeah.
Is there a difference, and then there's twenty schools versus four schools, and don't we have twenty-three schools?
It's really simple. It just sounds fancier than what it is. Cohort A is just the first five to ten teachers from that site that have been, had the opportunity to go through it. Cohort B is the second group of teachers from that site. So we do have four sites. Kellogg, Willow Creek, John Adams, and Bishop Elementary School took their own professional development dollars to send the first cohort through, so they already have a Cohort A established. So for those four sites, a second round of teachers.
So they won't have an additional Cohort A?
Well, it'll just be called a Cohort B, which will be essentially the same thing. It's just five to ten new people.
Got it. Thank you.
Or additional teachers.
Mr. Smith.
Certainly support, approve this, but I just wanted, actually, it's a little off-topic, I just wanted to say thank you for your service and the work to the district, since this is your last time before us.
It is.
I want you to know that, you know, I'm sure all of us here appreciate all the good work that you've done. Probably Mike more than any of us, but, but I thought, you know, we should at least recognize the fact that you've done a good job while you were here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And as I pointed out, we didn't give you a permission slip. You didn't get it signed, so, and I don't remember that we voted on accepting your resignation, so.
You did approve it last board meeting.
Got to start reading. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Janie.
And that was a briefing item.
This isn't going to change until this?
No.
I just move it to action and?
It's been moved to action. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase of the contracted services of the Center, Center of Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning at the total price of $180,000 from FY19 dollars allocated for professional development.
No approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point oh one, approval of the 2018-2019 school district budget. This is an action item.
Discussion? Or do we vote?
Not until I read the motion.
No approval.
I have to, I have to read it first. I'll read it, I'll read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But thanks for your support.
I thought you had to have a motion before you even did that.
Okay. It's already an action item. Be it resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve and appropriate the 2018-2019 original expenditure budget in the following amounts. General fund, $224,772,885. Food service fund, $9,682,157. Community services fund, $13,122,302. Debt service fund, $9,916,499. Workers' compensation fund, $1,293,772. Dental insurance trust fund, $2,635,400. Health insurance trust fund, $33,789,169. Internal service fund, Paper Tiger, $411,083. And the OPEB Irrevocable Trust Fund, $1,240,301, for a total of $296,863,568.
Now, no approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Workman.
I'll try and be brief. I know. First of all, I really like to thank Chair Marvin for asking some questions for me while I was gone concerning the, the breakdown on the three property tax levies and a couple of other items. So at one point, there was a budget item or discussion on page 14 about student transportation fuel costs, that we would be getting a rebate. So does the reverse happen if the, if fuel costs go up above a certain amount? Do we have to pay more?
John.
I'll answer that. So yes, if the fuel were above the amount that's kind of worked into the base budget there, we would have an excess charge, but fuel costs have been running well below budget, so we'll be getting a credit back.
I, I was really kind of hoping, you know, that we got the lower.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a good year.
And then also on page 14, do our graduate inductees have their own classroom, or do they work with a teacher in the, in the classroom, that's already in the classroom?
They have their own classroom, Riverside.
Okay. And then? So on page 19, the last paragraph that's in italics says that we are going to be receiving $1.1 million tomorrow. Is that still on schedule?
Yes, it is, actually. I verified that yesterday, and we are getting that payment tomorrow.
Excellent. And then finally, I had a couple of questions from community members. Are the additional costs that we incurred from charter schools factored into the 2018-2019 budget, special education budget?
We believe so, as much as we can tell.
As much as you can, right, okay.
Yep, we tried to be very conservative on that, this coming here.
And then the next question has to do a little bit more with, with special education. It was mentioned that the number of social workers are increasing from 30 to 33.5, and the number of school psychologists is increasing from 15.6 to 15.9, which I think is great because these are people that we really need to help our students to be successful. On the video, it was mentioned that the school psychologists do the assessments for students who may qualify for special education. So I'd kind of like to know what the process is that a student might go through in being recommended, evaluated, and subsequently spec, placed in special education. There seems to be some information floating around in the community that we just, this kid is disruptive in the classroom, so we're going to throw him into special education, done. And I don't think that's quite exactly the process that, that we use. If we could have just a little bit of detail on that, I would appreciate it.
Well, John's probably not the right person to go about it, but I can tell you, the federal government does not, you have to jump a lot of hoops to get a student identified in special education, and, and so that's not the case. I don't know, Carla, if you want to come and talk specifically about the process?
I mean, I, I know that they're not thrown into special education willy-nilly, but I think it would be helpful to understand just briefly what the process might be for that kind of a referral.
So the first thing is that there have to be multiple issues happening in the classroom, obviously, before they're referred. That's one way that students can be referred to the building's child study team. Parents could also refer for evaluation if they have concerns, but before they get to the assessment component of the process, they have to have a number of interventions documented at the site level. Typically, three interventions for a significant length of time, and those interventions have to be proven not to be successful, and then they move to the evaluation process. And every disability category has a number of different areas that students have to qualify in before they receive services.
Thank you. Thank you. I was going to say, that, that could be another whole study session about special education and, and, so, thank you. Other questions? Okay, we have the motion before us. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you too for taking my questions. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. I'm here for six or seven items in a row, so, no big deal.
Just got you to warm up your chair a little.
That's right.
If you need coffee or anything, let us, let us know. Seven, I just did that one. Seven point oh two, approval of municipal advisor briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this item.
Great.
Well, thank you. From time to time, we review the firms that do professional services with us, such as audit firms, attorneys, and this is the first time since I've been around that we've looked at the municipal advisor. The municipal advisor that we currently use is Springstead, and I believe they've been with us for around 40 years at this point. We've recently come in contact with another firm, Springstead's largest competitor in Minnesota known as Ellers. We talked with them here as a superintendent and cabinet, and believe that they would probably be a good fit for us. Some of their credentials are, they have nine municipal advisors and financial specialists on staff in their Minnesota office here that have over 200 years of combined school finance experience. They've issued $6.2 billion of voter-approved bonds since 1997. They've advised nearly 70% of the successful bond referendums between the years 2013 and 2017, and they currently work with 17 of the 25 largest school districts in Minnesota. So they're very well-known, very well-respected. And to be honest, so is Springstead. They are very well-known and, and respected in Minnesota as well. Normally, we have you approve the financial advisor. It's part of just kind of the annual designations of depositories and things like that in the January meeting. Since this was coming up kind of right at the time we were starting the new fiscal year, I thought that rather than just wait six months, let's have you do that now, and then they can begin working with us as we start talking with our facilities task force and the potential for building bond referendum, so they'd be on the front end rather than six months behind in the conversation.
Yeah, just a couple of things. This is no indication at all that we were not satisfied with Springstead. They, they've done a nice job for our district and over the 40 years. For me, the timing was right. If you recall, a few years ago, the board suggested that maybe every five years, we reevaluate partnerships we have, and, and not that we're not happy with them, but just to see what's out there. We did not do a formal RFP, just because Springstead and Ellers are the two main companies that, that do this kind of work for school districts. We're well aware of what Springstead has done, since we've worked with them for many years, and for me, the timing, Don, who you're, you're all very familiar with, is kind of working his way out and retiring, kind of. We just thought the timing was right. As John said, we brought them in, and they did a formal presentation, and then I spoke to several superintendents that I know and who use them, and they spoke very highly of them. So we thought that this was the right time to make the switch. However, if the board would like us to put out an RFP, we, we can still do that, but like I said, since we felt they're really just two providers, and we knew one already, and did a formal presentation with, with the other, that's why we're bringing this recommendation to you tonight.
Mr. Smith.
What are the, any financial implications of this? I mean, are they, they, their hourly rates less, more, the same, or do we expect the, the cost to be, do we consider that at all, I guess?
Sure. I, you know, I failed to explain kind of what does a municipal advisor do for us. They, they are the ones that advise us on a debt transaction. That's their primary function. They also offer us other ongoing financial advice, operating referendums, special projects, things like that. When we sell debt, that's where they make their money. They take a certain defined percentage of the debt deal. They represent us at that transaction, so they're not in cahoots with the bank or the who's selling it and trying to make a profit off the debt, but they're just taking a flat cut from that. Their fees are very similar, because it's, as a competitive industry, there's two main players, they both have to have about the same. And when I looked at their fee schedules, one was higher on certain services, one was higher on other. If you blend them together, we're probably going to pay the same amount of dollars throughout a year.
That's my question.
Other question? Ms. Becker.
So what are they going to do better than Springstead?
I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't say, better would be the right way to describe it. I think they bring a fresh and a different perspective, and so they can come in and look at our situation and maybe propose something we haven't been thinking of, or we haven't been talking with Springstead about in the past. Again, I think they're very both respected, and both can do a good job for us, so I wouldn't say that this is a situation where it's best and better, it's, it's good and good, or great and great, so.
Ms. Workman.
So what I really hear you saying is that we're going to get somebody to come in with new eyes looking at the district. You know, like when somebody comes into my home and they see all the stuff around that my eyes don't see anymore. Not that we're in that situation, but just as an example, it can, you kind of get into maybe a certain way of, of thinking about things. So I think this is, is probably a good move.
Mr. Smith.
Well, and some of the, the relationship was with Don, was made, like, these are kind of relationship-based firm, and evidently having the presentation felt that you were comfortable working with the, the folks, whoever they were assigned to our district, that that's the relationship you want to focus on building in that regard. I mean, that, I mean, people retire, I get that.
Yes, you do.
Mr. Schlesner.
So kind of along these lines is, you know, you'd mentioned at the beginning, you're asked to revisit some of these from time to time. Does the district have a schedule where with some of our major partners, we do have a schedule of, okay, every, it's been four years since we've looked at garbage, for example?
Ironically, I was going to use that example, but I didn't want to bring that up again.
Auditor, you could use auditor.
Yep.
Is there a conscious schedule that's out there?
Correct. It's generally about five years we've been looking at. Now, like with our banking relationship, we did not do that at the five-year marker because about the two-year marker of the banking relationship, they were acquired by a different bank. So it was kind of like we naturally switched there. That would be something we'd review again in another couple of years, and kind of try to stagger them so they all don't land on the same year or two, just for our workload.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Renewal of contracted services for the Independent School District 535 Self-Insurance Trust Fund Program. This is an information item. Mr. Carlson.
All right, this, like you just said, this is an information item, so there's no request for action here. Just want to bring you up to speed on a meeting the Self-Insurance Trust Committee had on May 24th. This is a group that, whose sole purpose is to make sure that we do not run out of money in our health insurance and dental insurance trust funds for our employees. So on the board, our two community representatives who do not work for the school district or are not on the school board, we have one teacher, we have a school board member, which is Mr. Smith right now, and myself. And we get together and we review any decisions that need to be made. At this time of the year, we look at renewing contracted services for stop-loss insurance, our software, our network, and anything else that we need to look at. So we talked with, and by the way, at these, for, for the fund, we hire a consultant called Hayes that does a lot of the work, goes out and does negotiating on our behalf, and I, I think they do a tremendous job at bringing us up to speed and giving us the data we need to make good decisions. But they went out and looked at the stop-loss. We're, we got an offer for a 15.5% increase, which they thought was out of line, and so they negotiated, and it came back at an 8% increase. So right there, that 7% decrease saved us about $40,000. So that nearly pays for Hayes' whole annual fee right there in the work they were able to get done on that one negotiation. They also worked on Blue Cross and agreed to a 0% increase, and that was partly driven by some of the frustrations we've had with the Blue Cross software changeover this year. And so I think they realized they were not in a strong position with us to demand an increase of even 2% this year because of, of the ongoing things we're trying to resolve with them. So overall, this was a very good meeting, I'd say, unless Mr. Smith feels differently, but we were very pleased with the work that Hayes did and what they were able to get done for us. So we approved all of their recommendations at our meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Before we go on to the next item, unless anybody else has questions on this, just as a matter of process, we didn't move seven point oh two to, to action, but yet in the resolution, I see that you would have liked to have done this by, changeover by July 1st, and as much as our next board meeting isn't until July 17th, is there some Roberts Rules of Order we can do to go backwards, or to reconsider? How does that work?
I do believe you can make a motion to reconsider the item.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to reconsider seven point oh two.
Second.
To reconsider, was that to move it to action, or just to reconsider?
Reconsider and then?
So at this point, we are considering, once again, seven point oh two. Would anybody like to move that to action?
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Excuse me, just point out, I think we should have voted on the, the reconsideration first, just to be, just to be formal about it.
Yep.
Thank you. Good point. Someone move to reconsider this item?
But we can vote. We had a motion in a second, you just need to vote on it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is reconsidered.
There we go.
Now you want to move it to?
Now we need to move it to action.
So move to action?
Second.
Any discussion? This is now an action item. Be it resolved?
We got a vote.
I'm moving it to action.
You know, look at the time. I'm really.
It's okay, we're here for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're voting on this to become an action item.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's an action item.
There you go.
And it is. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby designate Ellers as municipal advisor for the district.
No approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And thank you for the information item. And now we are on to seven point oh four, approval of group life insurance policy renewal. This is This is a briefing item.
All right. This one is also good news for us. We have one thousand six hundred and seventy employees that participate in the group life insurance benefit that the district offers. Most employees have to pay a portion of that premium on their paycheck, and the district covers the remainder of that cost. Just like other things, we take a look at this, and we engage the services of National Insurance Services to do the bids and quotes for us on, on these insurance products, and they did that. They put it out to many different companies. Only two actually responded to our request for rates, but the proposal from Madison National Life, which is our current carrier, did come in at the best price. They are proposing a four and a half percent decrease to the rates, so that's good news for the district on our costs that are negotiated into our benefits packages, and then on the employees who have to also pay part of that premium. That would be a lower cost to them coming out of their paycheck. These rates are good for, this one was three school years, July first eighteen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The approximate cost right now, again, this changes all the time based on salaries go up and, and the benefit goes up, but right now, it's costing about two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Again, not all of that is district-paid cost, part of that is, is employee-paid cost, but that's the annual total.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move to action?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? And since the policy years begin July first twenty eighteen, as you said, this is probably a good idea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the premium rate of nine cents per thousand dollars of coverage for the group life insurance policy from Madison National Life Insurance Company for the policy years beginning July first twenty eighteen through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one, with an approximate annual premium of two hundred and thirty-four, excuse me, I get choked up about money, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to be funded partially from the district and partially by participants' premium deductions.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Seven point oh five, approval of group long-term disability policy renewal. This is a briefing item.
All right. This one is very, very similar. We have one thousand six hundred and thirty-five employees that participate in the long-term disability program. Again, it's an optional benefit. You can choose or decline when you become employed, and we put this out for bid recently, and this one came back at a nine point two five percent reduction in price. So, again, the district will save money, and our employees will save money if we renew at this rate. The grand total on this one, on an annual basis right now, is about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars per year. And again, it's split between the district and employees paying that cost. This one is actually, they guaranteed the rate for five years, so we looked at that as very positive for our employees.
Move to action?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to make this an action item. Any discussion? And our current policy expires this June thirtieth, so, good plan. Yeah, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the premium rate of twenty-seven, uh, point twenty-seven percent per hundred dollars of coverage for the group long-term disability insurance policy from Madison National Life Insurance Company for the policy years beginning July first twenty eighteen through June thirtieth twenty, twenty-three, with an approximate annual premium, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to be funded partially from the district and partially by participants' premium deductions.
I'm sure. I think, I think this is meant to read twenty-seven cents per hundred, or is it twenty-seven percent? Is it percent?
It's, it's zero point two seven percent, but that basically equates to like two point seven cents.
So, that's correct. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking.
Thank you, because I read it wrong, so thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Ms. Becker?
So, is the document correct in the attachment? Or is it the same as seven point oh four? I mean, because the point zero nine, I think, is in both of them?
It goes down to page three.
Down further, okay. All right.
Does that answer a question? Okay. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point oh six, approval of site agreement with UCI Tower LLC. This is a briefing item.
All right. I was last here in twenty sixteen talking about cell phone towers, so I'll just give you a quick recap of where we're at. We have two properties that have cell phone towers on them right now, one at Century High School and one at John Marshall High School. Primarily, I'm only talking today about the one at Century High School. The one at John Marshall High School, we're going to have to redo something on that, and so that'll come forward here at a different date. The one at Century High School was originally an agreement with Vertical Real Estate Incorporated. This goes back to about nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand timeframe. They eventually filed for bankruptcy, and the agreement was assumed by American Tower Corporation at some point in, in the past here. We've been working, I don't want to disparage a vendor in public, but we've been working for about two years with American Tower, trying to get corrected the amount of revenue that is owed to the district. And there's been a lot of back and forth. We've had UCI Services, which is a related company here to UCI Tower, but the services side has been working with them on our behalf, trying to collect back payments that are due to the district. We've had two years of frustration, and I've basically said, we need to call it quits, and we need to end the agreement. So, on April twenty-sixth, we engaged our lawyer, Dunlap and Seeger, and they sent notice to American Tower on our behalf, saying the agreement was terminated as per, we're allowed to do in the lease, as of May thirty-first twenty eighteen. So, that date has already come and passed. So, now, what we're talking about right now is, is setting up a new lease agreement with UCI Tower to take over that space at Century High School. Well, how we've modeled this, UCI Tower does business with Olmsted County, and they have towers and are doing this on different county properties. So, we've set a lease agreement that is very, very similar with same language, and rates that are better than what we were getting from American Tower. So, how this would work is, they'll pay us a hundred dollars per month base rate, with an annual increase guaranteed of three percent, so year-over-year, every July, it would go up three more percent. For each vendor that puts a tower at the very top of the, the big pole that you see there, the first one will pay us seven hundred and thirty-five dollars per month, the next one eight thirty-five, and from there, it's three fifty. My understanding is that these, these poles can hold about five cell phone vendors at the top. Right now, we only have one, and it's, I think, Northern PCS, which is a subsidiary of Sprint. But it's very possible we could attract Verizon and, and AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, et cetera. What we were getting was about seven hundred dollars per month when we were getting it, and when we could agree on the amount that we were supposed to be getting. The contract was written in a way that it wasn't really guaranteed what we're supposed to get. We're supposed to get twenty-five percent of the revenue, and what we couldn't ever get an honest, I feel an honest answer back, is what was the gross revenue on which to calculate the twenty-five percent. And so, that's why we moved to the point of terminating the lease, and why we're asking to set up a new lease. This would be a five-year lease, uh, excuse me, a ten-year lease with options to renew in five-year increments from there.
Mr. Smith?
So, we leased to UCI, and then they sell to the, they sublease to the?
Then they sublease to Sprint for a higher amount. They give us an amount that they know.
We're not, we're not out chasing vendors to, to put, they're, they're doing that.
Correct. Exactly. Yep.
Ms. Workman?
So, do I hear you saying that we never did collect the money that they owed us, or did we?
Um, they have sent us a check now that we've terminated the lease, in hopes that that would resolve our past differences, but we have not cashed it yet, until we got to the point of saying, this is over and this is done, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? At this point, this is a briefing item?
Move this action to?
Second.
Action.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It is, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five approves the site agreement with UCI Tower LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of amendment to services agreement with UCI Services LLC.
So, as I mentioned, UCI, UCI Services is the sister company of UCI Tower. UCI Services was who we originally contracted back on February sixteenth, twenty sixteen, to go out on our behalf and work and try to gain new revenue, to which they would get a portion of that, a thirty percent fee. They feel, and I feel, obviously, too, that since a related company of theirs is now going to hold the lease at Century, and it's going to be for more money than we were getting, they really probably shouldn't get that thirty percent of the increase in revenue there, since it's a related company. And we worked that out, and this amendment just clarifies that, that of the extra hundred, hundred and fifty dollars a month, and over ten years, we don't have to pay a thirty percent cut back to them of that, so they'll remove Century from that agreement.
Okay, any questions?
Move to action.
Second.
Any, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five approves the First Amendment to the Services Agreement with UCI Services LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Seven point oh eight, resolution, non-renewing probationary teacher. This is an action item, and there will be a roll-call vote. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section one twenty-two A, point forty-one subdivision two A, the School Board hereby declares to renew the annual, decline, sorry, hereby, I need to print bigger. Hereby declines to renew the annual teaching contract of Katharina Scar, a probationary teacher.